Okay, we are on air and we're gonna go ahead and start the city council special session for Tuesday, December tenth, 2019. We have two items. The first item will be a change order number one to contract K eighteen nineteen dash forty-four by in between the Norman Utilities Authority and Lane Christensen Company, increasing the contract amount by one million, six hundred, seven thousand, nine hundred, seventy dollars and thirty-six cents for a revised contract amount of six million, three hundred, twenty-two thousand, three hundred, ninety-two and eight cents, and increasing the contract time by one hundred and sixty calendar days for the two thousand and eighteen groundwater well-filled development project. We have a presentation with our staff.
Okay, good evening. Thank you. My name is Chris Mattingly, capital projects engineer for the utilities department, and this is my project, the well field project. Originally, it's from the twenty sixty water supply plan that we adopted and are following. And the interim solution in that was to add two million gallons per day of well water. So that's what our project is aimed for. As part of the two thousand and fifteen rate increase, we anticipated it would take like ten wells. So we kind of budgeted about eleven, twelve million dollars is what we thought would get the wells put in plus the water lines. Once we started taking requests for proposals, I'll show you the wells here. And some of the wells too, it was gonna be out to the northeast of Norman, Lake Thunderbird, this is kind of the downtown area. After we received some of the proposals, some of the consultants suggested that we might want to look into a horizontal technology. So we actually set up two projects. We had a vertical wells project where we're gonna try to pursue six of the wells instead of ten. And then instead of the four, we were gonna do one horizontal well because some research is saying that-
Councilmember Beerman?
I think you were probably gonna get to it, but we have a number of council members who are not here, for not on council for that discussion about horizontal water drilling and the difference between that and the horizontal drilling that we might think of when we think of horizontal drilling. So just if you have a brief explainer of that-
My next slide will show you kind of a diagram of that.
And I'm sorry for jumping in.
No, that's good. So one thing that caught our attention was they said the horizontal well might cost three to four times what a vertical is, so that's a downside, but you might get three to eight times the yield. And so we were like, ooh, you get more water than the verticals. That might be something we want to look at. So kind of what a horizontal is, okay, this is a vertical, and this is, this is our typical, we've done billions of these, okay? We know vertical wells. You go down and you just go a straight well and you go through, this is a sand layer right in here, and you just go through it and you put in screen right here through the sand layer. So the water in that sand layer can fall in your pipe, put a pump from the bottom and you pump it out. Horizontal is you come down and you, they can actually aim the drilling rig, and they get into that sand layer and they try to stay in it and get more surface area touching the sand with screened levels. So you get like, oh roughly about two gallons per foot of screen when you're in the sand. And so that would be a lot more touching that water. So more water could fall in your well. And so that's the concept behind it. And we looked at it and actually Garber, we paid them to do research on it, and got to a point where we almost chose it. But getting down to it, we just thought, well, the risk, there's, there's a few things we didn't know about the operation and maintenance over the long term. Verticals, we know and feel very comfortable with. So we kind of, so we chickened out at the last minute and said, no, that's not at this time, but we do want to look at it again and maybe do it in the future because it does look promising. Another thing is, a lot of times on a vertical, they call it a cone of depression, everyone knows that, talks that. This one would have caused a new thing called a trough of depression. We didn't know how that would affect some of our other wells that are in the area. And we're worried it might, you know, our spacing might have to be increased. So we just a lot of, a lot of questions that we didn't know. But still, we, we were very close to going through with it. So with that, we-
Councilwoman Wilson?
Did we, I know when we originally talked or at one point talking about this technology, this horizontal well technology, that we are talking about using that on some of our old wells that we'd had to condemn because of arsenic, because you could go to a different level? Did I understand that correctly?
That's something we might, we might look into the futures. So some of the older wells, you have several sand zones, okay? And, and then the deeper ones, we seem to see more arsenic in the deeper zones. So a lot of times when we drill one of these wells, and in this group, we're, we kind of have a strategy. We're gonna drill down, if it's high in arsenic in the bottom zones, we're not gonna perfor those zones or put in screens there. We'll just screen these. So we'll just have to wait and not get that sand at this time. The horizontal concept is just what you're saying. Instead of going down and trying to get those, you just try to get in the one that you think is a good sand zone and get more water out of that four hundred to five hundred foot of depth and not get the five hundred or six hundred-
So, so am I hearing you say that you, in the new wells, you can, you can take them to wherever the sand is and get it from there. But the old wells, I'm wondering if-
Yeah, we're, we don't know. We didn't look into that. But we were, the concept is right.
I don't want to take us into the weeds on a different direction.
Get the old hole. And, and then get it, put in a leg on that and still have it fall into your, you know, your hole and still pump that out. So it's, uh, some work-
And while we're talking about well technology, I was also curious about somebody on Facebook. So I don't know. I'm just gonna throw it out there.
They're all experts.
They're all experts, and I'm not. But can we use abandoned oil wells? Like, okay, that, what, did anybody else see that on Facebook?
Yeah.
Okay, I was like, is that something that can happen?
I've been on Facebook once in the last week.
You're not missing much.
It would be, we'd be nervous about it because-
It just seems like it'd be toxic.
When we do a well, wellhead inspection or before we drill a well, we kind of look in the area and we don't want any gas tanks. We don't want oil wells real close by because we don't want accidental contamination in our drinking water. And DQ wants us to do that preliminary work to try to space them where we're not around anything that could cause influence.
Councilwoman Petrow?
Just to recap quickly, do you say it took three times more expensive, but yields three to eight times more water over the life of the well?
Yeah, just that's in theory, three to four times was the cost. And three to eight times was the yield. That's what their report came up with.
Thank you.
And so we still need to get our two NGD of water. And so that's kind of, Lane is our, Lane bid our project along with a group called Hydro Resources. We had another group, Stewart Brothers out of New Mexico. They also were going to bid it, but they didn't submit a bid. And the engineer's estimate, and it looks like Lane, we think it's favorable prices. They came in at four point seven million for six wells. Hydro Resources was at seven point seven million, and the engineer's estimate was five point two million. So we, we felt like it was favorable prices. And now we kind of set it up also with unit prices. So we knew that if we want to start off with six wells, we might want to go to ten wells, we might want to go to nine wells. We could add some to that as possible well. Hey, Lane, will you drill another one for us while you're here? And that's kind of the, that's what, you know, got to this change order. So like Stephen said, we started off with four point seven million. We're adding one point six. That's for three additional wells. Currently, our investigations are showing that instead of ten wells, we might be able to get by with nine wells. And I'll show you why. Two wells, we did test holes up here at the park well, this one right here. That came in really nice. That's probably gonna be our best well. And also one all the way up on Indian Hills Road, that came in very nice. More back in the three hundred range, gallon per minute range. Usually we see a two hundred gallon minute range. So that, that's, that's why we're thinking we might be able to get by with nine wells. But hopefully, if, again, we were trying to get two NGD, if we can't get the two NGD with the nine wells, we might come back and have Lane drill one more and make it our ten. One of the other things we did is we borrowed money from the Water Resources Board. So like eleven, twelve million dollars is what we have right now. At a low three point two interest. And we have six million dollars unencumbered to get the additional, the four well, three or four wells, plus the water lines to connect those. And that's, you guys saw those in previous council meeting, Cardinal and Garber contracts before yet. Cardinal's gonna be designing these water lines out here, and Garber's gonna design this water line here. And that just gets those wells into the rest of the system.
Councilwoman Petrow?
Okay, so am I understanding correctly that the change order will give enough to have potentially ten wells, but you think you might only need nine?
No. The change order is actually, I'm just going for nine at this time.
Okay, so if we decide to add the extra one, then we'll see you again?
Yes. I'm kind of just balancing my money. I have six million dollars left to get hopefully three more wells and the water lines to get all that into town.
Councilwoman Scott?
I was watching online before I got here. Was it a million and so for the change order?
Yes, one point six million.
And that comes out of the enterprise funds? Correct? Okay, thank you. That's all just wanted to be confirmed that I heard that correctly.
Chris, how, how do we go about getting these well sites?
Okay, we've already done that.
Right. How did that hap-
How'd it go?
Did we take anybody's property from them?
No.
Seen that on Facebook.
That took a little longer. I'm giving the contractor a hundred and sixty days because we originally hoped to be done in July twenty twenty. And we're gonna extend it to December twenty twenty. They're gonna show up in January and really start drilling them. But the land acquisition took a little longer than we thought. Because of that, we tried to be nice and go to people that wanted us to come in. We didn't, if they weren't interested, we went to the next door neighbor, went on to someone else. Three of them were pretty insistent that they didn't want to do easements. We really wanted to do easements and not buy land. And three of them didn't want to pay taxes on the easement land. And so they insisted, you want my land, you have to buy it. So three of them we are gonna buy. Seven of them, we have easement, and the parks was nice and gave us easement on that. Judge.
Very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
Just for the record, because I get this question often, we are not going to be drawing water from residential wells. Am I correct in understanding that?
Good question. Say never, but what we do is every fifth well, we put in a set of three test wells or monitoring wells. And we have some currently already. I can't remember the location exactly, but every fifth well, we will put in monitoring wells. Since we're gonna drill nine or ten, we're gonna put in two sets of monitoring wells on this project. And those are to prove to homeowners, landowners in the area, we'll put in a little monitoring well that has a shallow that should be comparable to what they have at their house. We put in a medium and we put in a deep. And then we pump our well and we can monitor in there and watch the water level drop, if at all. So far, we've had USDS contested, Waterboard contested. The shallow water never drops. So they're on a perch aquifer. So that sand zone I showed you, they're usually like a sand zone up in here, like the two hundred feet deep. And that's the other thing is, we've done as a utility is, we usually don't want to compete with them or even get close to them. So we, we usually do not perforate or put in screens until after three hundred feet deep because we don't want to compete with them. A lot of them are hundred fifty to three hundred. Not many go to three hundred though, actually.
So an additional question to go with that. Does the, the Water Resource Board monitor those levels? Or who ensures, what happens if somebody does lose their well in, in this process?
So we have them on SCADA, and we will be monitoring them. And we turn in water reports to the Water Board each year to tell how much we're using because everyone has a right to make sure and get your water. And if that comes up, we'll have to address it at that time. But so far, like I said, we have continued to have those to prove to ourselves and to the landowner that we won't compete for their shallow perched aquifers.
Okay, that doesn't really tell me what happens, but-
But we don't, we'll dress, you know-
Has it ever happened, I guess?
Not in Norman.
Not yet.
And are all of the nine that we're drilling, are we doing them all horizontal?
No, we're gonna do vertical. That's the change order.
We're not gonna put one in.
We're not gonna do a horizontal at this time.
Maybe that tenth one.
Yeah, yeah.
If I need, the, the in-depth conversation staff had, we see value in an attempt for a horizontal well somewhere in the mix. But what the taxpayers were promised is two million gallons of productivity from groundwater. And there is, we think there's more risk with the potential for much more reward on the horizontal. But we want to make sure we hit that two million gallon target that we promised the taxpayers first. Once we hit two million gallons, we'd love to come back and have that conversation about the horizontal well. But that, we didn't have that conversation when we were getting voter approval to get two million additional gallons from-
And I am going on getting those additional sites. I'm getting eleven sites. So they're teed up. I'm gonna get the water rights for them. So they will be ready for any future wells that we need because in the future going forward, we probably need a well replacement program and water fund to come later. But we have some wells that are reaching fifty, sixty-year-old life that are gonna be dating in or, you know, going where we have to discontinue using them and need to drill a new well to replace them. So.
A follow-up to that and then an unrelated question as well. But can you take an existing horizontal and change it into a vertical?
If we drilled a horizontal and it didn't work, if we would have the, the vertical hole. So it would be salvageable and we could at least get a vertical equivalent out of it. That was one of the things we looked at and we liked that. Yeah, it'd be more cost because what we'd be doing is designing bigger pump, bigger house, thinking we were gonna get a lot of water out of it. And then we'd have to downsize that and put in smaller pump. And so we'd, we would have overbuilt a little.
I guess what I'm asking is on the ones that are aging out?
Oh.
Can you retrofit it and say, you know what, we had this vertical hole. It's, because I know nothing about this. Can we go horizontal for that?
We're gonna look at that. I'm not, we're not sure. The steel casing that is in those old ones, sixty years old, it's steel and a lot, sometimes it'll rust. We've had a couple of them where they crack and then a shard of it will stick out. And then you can't get a pump and motor in and out of the hole anymore. It gets tangled up in there. And so abandon the well. So and it's, you know, it's very deep, it's five hundred feet deep, six hundred feet deep.
Okay, then the unrelated question. Do we anticipate that this is gonna affect water rates at all?
It's based on our past water rate. The current rate will cover these costs. We already anticipated for this. And so this is all covered under the two thousand and fifteen rate increase.
Okay.
What we're trying to do is meet our goals of what we told the rate payers back then. And then once we finish all that, there will be, you know, another set of something to do with the water. And then we will go back to them and hopefully get another rate increase in the future.
Did you have another one? Councilwoman Wilson?
I did, but I'm trying to think what it was.
Chris, where do these wells feed into? They just go right into the piping systems? So they're just blended in with our treated water? And that's what makes it-
Yes.
Good? But I knew no, uh-
Wells will individually mean all standards.
Yeah, they're all good. They're all good.
Right.
But if the regulations change in the future, that would be a problem.
Well, I know this strategic plan, we, we did identify the groundwater treatment plant as a future need as well. So that's an interesting part of the plan, if you guys aren't aware of it. Who, yeah, Councilwoman Wilson remembered hers, yeah.
I remember my question. So you, you referenced that those older wells are forty to fifty, fifty to sixty years old. Are, do we have new technology or anything like that, that these wells will last longer? Or are these gonna be the same lifespan too?
Life span, yeah.
Is it about the water or the mechanics?
It's the metal in the ground and just shifting, ground shifting, keeping that clean hole.
Councilwoman Beerman?
Earthquake, yeah.
Is, is this push to two million gallons to hopefully replace what we are purchasing from Oklahoma City?
Yes.
Because I felt like the numbers were about the same, that we were buying about the same amount as we're trying to pull out.
In the big water plan though, I worry to say that because we were needing, we, yeah, we had like six million gallon right now in the well field. We have six that's really guaranteed firm yield of the lake right now. That's twelve. We're hoping to get one from conservation, which it does look like that's coming, doing well. People are doing, using less. We were trying to get point eight from maybe putting some reuse, non-pot system, more like watering the golf course, maybe doing one for baseball fields or something like that, try to play off of that. And so that, that gets us to, we have fourteen now. With this too, we'd get to sixteen. And the plan said then our last piece was thirteen point one to get to the twenty-nine point one million gallons per day. And that thirteen point one was either Oklahoma City or augmenting the lake. And so we chose P fourteen, which was to augment the lake. And so that's what we're gonna go for on that last thirteen point one. So I think we need all we can. We, we've been lucky to have so much rain in these last few years since two thousand and twelve. And so the next drought that comes, we're all gonna be getting nervous again because we didn't have enough water back then. We were really tight.
I recall well, during the committee, wells being a big part of the interim until wastewater reuse could-
And I like having Oklahoma City as a base, just a one million gallon because you can count on it right now. Yeah, it'd be great if we can get our own portfolio up and not use as much. That definitely would be a good goal.
I have a follow-up.
Yes.
And drought is actually one of my big worries even about purchasing from Oklahoma City because aside from whatever contractual agreement we have with them, there's really nothing that stops them from saying, we need all of our water. Like, your, our drought is your drought and your drought is our drought. And we don't have the, we don't have the water to sell anymore, which is one reason why I am a little disappointed that we're not moving ahead with the horizontal drilling. I know, I know that it's risky for all of its own reasons, but I also see it being risky to be so reliant on another entity for our water. So-
That's why reuse is looking good.
Yes.
If we could get to that, it's drought proof.
Yep.
That's the route we chose. Instead of building a new lake with Ada or on the west side, building a dam on the river was one of the options, I think. Or making Lake Thunderbird bigger was another one. So, but wastewater reuse is the one that we-
Wait till I'm off council to do that.
Yeah. Any further, yes, Councilwoman Wilson?
Okay, I'm gonna say the dirty words here. The connection fees, if we were to increase connection fees, I understand we have a careful balance of tax revenue off of home sales, being an affordable community, having affordable housing. But we also don't want to outpace our infrastructure. It seems a little bit like we're, we're supporting new development on our current water customers' backs with a possible rate increase next year. So I'm curious as to what we might be doing or thinking about along the lines of connection fees and increasing them. Anybody? Just throwing it out there. I know it's a big ugly elephant.
That's part of if we, we propose a rate increase coming up. This, this, these wells and this project has been paid for already by the rates we got in two thousand and fifteen. That's the last time we increased rates was two thousand and fifteen. And that pays for this. So the next piece of the puzzle, which will be treatment or blending or new meters for our system, things of that nature, we'll probably need more money. There's, like you said, there's a balance between the cost of new wells and new customers. And so that's what these ten wells would help us get is before, we never really had a method to say how much each well costs. So with these nine wells plus the piping, we'll say, okay, a new well costs about X because we'll have the average of nine wells. Because not all wells are the same, some pump more, some pump less, things like that. And so that'll give us a better idea of how much a new well costs and how many people a new well can serve to see if our connection fees are in line with where they should be now. So it'll give us a fresh look.
So it'll give us a little more data.
Rather than guessing using old numbers. That was one of the hangups before we were guessing.
Well, and so I, I just have more of an appetite for increasing those, offsetting this infrastructure build out. I know this one's already taken care of, but future situations by connection fees rather than-
Growth pays for growth.
Customer fees. Yes, that's what I like. Just, just in case y'all are wondering.
Puzzle. And we'll talk about that when we have to talk about rates.
Okay.
I think you had yours for-
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding the timeline on that. Are you saying that we won't know until December twenty twenty, when these are complete, what that data looks like?
We're working on that. Like you said, Chris said, you know, you've approved some of the line segments. He's, he's getting Lane Christensen with this, with this change order to drill some of the wells. So we're putting together all those numbers. So by July, some of these wells, not all of them will be working, but some of the wells will be working. We'll have a good understanding of about how much a well, an average well would cost with the pipelines and how much an average well would produce as far as water.
Okay, so a follow-up to that is what committee would, did this go to to be able to start having that conversation?
Could be oversight.
I think we-
It could be CPTU too.
Sometimes it started with the finance committee to-
Finance as well.
It's like finance committee.
That'd be interesting, having that conversation.
I agree.
Uh, Councilwoman Beerman?
When was the last time we raised connection fees? Not just looked at them?
Sixteen. It was, yeah, it was with our last rate increase, two thousand and fifteen, we had a three-year piece to it. And I think in two thousand and sixteen was the last time they went up.
Okay. Do you know, do you remember by how much?
They're at a thousand dollars now for home.
Okay. And what did it increase from? Do you remember?
I think we went from like six hundred to, I'm just guessing now, six hundred to eight hundred to a thousand, something like that. It went up three years rather than doing one big chunk.
Right, over three years. Okay.
Right now, they're all the same. Doesn't matter what the entity is, it's a thousand dollars.
It's the space on the size of the-
The size of the meter.
For a three quarters meter, yeah. It is based on size. How much?
Is there a commercial versus residential rate?
Yes.
So I, I would hope that if we, that kind of the same way we did in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, that if we're going to be talking about putting a water rate increase to voters, I think we also need to do the same on the other side and review connection fees and find an appropriate increase. I, to me, that's really the only justifiable way to ask the voters for more money is to say, and at the same time, because costs increase for everyone on each side, we're also going to raise connection fees by X amount, either before or after, or all at the same time. I, I think that that's the only equitable thing to do.
Councilwoman Scott and then Wilson?
Oh, are the connection fees only on new developments, brand new developments? Or are they also on, like when people tear down a home and then rebuild on top of it? Is it only if they expand or increase the-
If they upsize their meter.
They upsize?
We'll give them a credit for what meter size they add and they charge them extra.
So it's not on, if they just keep it the same and they have more capacity, like more people are in there at a new home?
Councilwoman Wilson?
I don't remember my question.
It is six, and we do have executive session to discuss an item that's on our agenda. Are there any further questions about this particular issue?
Oh, I remember my question.
Yes. Yes.
Jesus. To get the connection fees changed, is that administrative or do the voters have to approve that?
I believe the voters have to do that. That's the last time that went to a vote also.
Thank you.
Because administrative is not the things that you don't have to do.
Raise connection fees?
Connection fees?
No.
Connection fees.
The connection fees would have to be voted on. Administrative issues are things that you don't have to do, like extra poly cart. You don't have to have an extra poly cart.
Okay, gotcha.
But you do have water rates and you have to have connection fees. So those are voted things as part of our ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, we will have some further discussion about that issue. Okay. Anything else from staff on that? Okay.
We will proceed.
Okay. Item number two is consideration of adjourning into an executive session as authorized by Oklahoma statutes, Title 25, 307B3, to discuss the acquisition of real property located at 36th Avenue Northwest between Tecumseh Road and Indian Hills Road and Rock Creek Road between 36th Avenue Northwest and Grandview Avenue. Do I have a motion to adjourning to executive session?
So moved.
Second.